... with service, putting yourself, putting others ahead of yourself to make sure you're doing something for the common good, and honor is important as well. You know, being a general manager for Home Instead Senior Care, I've had the awesome opportunity of managing 150 caregivers who every single day go to work and they operate within their vocation. They don't do it because it's a job, they do it because they love caring for seniors. And I have an obligation to make sure that all of those people feel that value and feel that worth every single day when they go out to do that job. I think oftentimes in government, it's the same way. We often forget that those who work for us are often working in some type of a vocational level. They're doing it not necessarily for a selfish reason, but they're doing it because they have a desire to serve at a greater calling or for greater purpose. And I think as council members, we would have an opportunity and an obligation to remind those folks of why they're working, what the purpose is, to build that camaraderie and to make sure that they're also working towards those desired goals as well.
Thank you.
Counselor member Teetz.
Yes, I know you've touched on this, but to go on a little bit further, why do you want to serve on the Troy City Council?
It may just be part of who my makeup is. Again, having served in the military, the job that I have now, I have a calling in my life to serve others. And I have an opportunity to sit on a council, to serve, to make the community where my kids live, to make the community where my wife and I choose to live, where our business operates, to be the absolute best that it can be, not just for us, but for our neighbors and for those that we live with. And I can think of no better way to serve the city of Troy than to volunteer, to be in this type of position. And I would be thrilled with the opportunity and also look forward to serving as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Could I just ask where that beeping is coming from?
A computer that needs to have the sound adjusted for when email is incoming. Yeah, they fixed my last meeting and...
It was just fixed.
It was just fixed?
Remotely via...
Good evening.
Just a couple of housekeeping issues if I could.
Sure.
First off, I'd like you to introduce yourself and just tell us a little bit about yourself. And then after that, each council member will ask you an independent question, and if you could take two minutes to respond to those questions, that would be appreciated. There is a clock up here that will count down from two minutes. We're not going to hold you right to it, but if you could look for that, that would be great. Okay, so if you would take just a couple of minutes and introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about yourself.
Certainly. My name is Carmen Johnson. I am an 18-year resident of Troy, have been very involved with many things in the community, but currently I'm employed with AT&amp;T. I am working as communications consultant for them and mother of four. My youngest is currently at West Point. The others are busy in their own lives and having, we have two girls that are here in the community. My other son is at school in California. So I'm a very busy mom, very busy with my occupation, very busy in the community as well, but very pleased to be selected in the finalists. Thank you.
Great. I'm going to ask the first question.
Okay.
References are important to the interview process.
Yes.
Especially when there isn't time for a thorough interview. Please tell us who you chose as your references on your questionnaire, why you selected them, and what would they say about you?
Okay, sure. The first reference I chose was Ms. Barbara Harrell. Barbara has been a longtime advocate in the community, advocating for conservative values. She is, she and I have been friends for many years. She would say that I am a very loyal person, a person very committed to the community, someone that can be counted on, and someone that is truthful.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Fleming?
Yeah, the second one?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
That's okay, I'm sorry.
I'm drawing a blank right now on this friend's last name, and she's going to kill me as soon as I get out of here. But it's Debbie, and she is a community advocate as well in Troy. She is someone that I've worked with at AT&amp;T for many years. She and I have been very involved with Troy Community Coalition and different organizations like that. She has children that have gone through Troy schools, and she would probably say about me that I'm a strong leader. I'm a strong leader at work, I'm a strong leader in the community, and would say that I am a loyal friend and that I am, let's see, what else would Debbie say about me? That I'm a good mom, probably, because she knows me personally, and we, our kids grow up together, so.
Great, thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Fleming?
Yes, Carmen. If appointed, what is the primary thing you would like to see accomplished by this council in the next year? And how would you contribute?
Thank you. Within the next year, I would really like to see this council focus greatly on our business community. As you know, the business community is the economic driver of our community. And if we grow our businesses in the area, that we will continue to see our tax revenues increase. And when you have tax revenues increase, of course, you then have more options for your community as well. But driving the business community and growing the business community is one of my major focuses, and I think that's where I would put my most energy in the coming year.
Thank you. Counselor member Campbell?
My name is Carmen, excuse me. The Troy City Charter states that the city council is to be a nonpartisan body.
Yes.
Based on that goal, I ask you the following: Are you now or have you ever been a member or supporter, financial or otherwise, of Troy Citizens United, TCU, Concerned Troy Citizens or Trust? And if we were to give you this seat, can you affirm your ability to make decisions based on the well-being of Troy citizens in a nonpartisan way?
Definitely, the council is a nonpartisan body. I understand that completely. But my support for the business community has been longstanding. I started supporting council members back when Robin Beltrameany was running for council. And I have really focused on members of the council that I felt were business-friendly. And so there have been many different organizations. Now, the ones that you mentioned, I'm not 100% sure on, I don't really know. But that has been my focus, is to focus on the ones that are business-friendly, that will bring business to our community.
Counselor member Henderson?
In light of our current taxable value situation, revenues in Troy are forecast to decline for the next couple of years. What do you view as the best possible course of action or actions for the council?
The best possible actions, as I've just stated, is to grow our business community. I remember the days when Doug Smith was the economic development person for our city. And he did some wonderful things, he had some great partnerships with the business community that I would like to develop in even greater way. Automation Alley is right here in our backyard. I would really like to see us do more with Automation Alley, to grow our business community here in Troy, because I believe that is the answer to what we have in front of us right now. We need to grow that business community, and so that would be my focus.
Thank you. Counselor member McGinnis?
Good evening. Could you please list for us some of the highlights of leadership roles that you've held, and tell us what important leadership characteristics that you've learned from these roles, and how you intend to use them for the benefit of the city and everyone who lives, works, or visits here?
Thank you for asking that question. I've been waiting for something like that. Thank you. The reason why I'm running for council is because I feel I have a lot of skills and abilities that would benefit the city. First of all, I have been an entrepreneur for many years, prior to coming to my current position at AT&amp;T. I believe that helps me to understand what it is to be an entrepreneur and what kind of regulatory environment needs to surround our business community. I've been with corporate, been a corporate employee for the last 14 years, so I understand how corporate works. I have my MBA in business, and I have a business background, as well as my Michigan Political Leadership Program that I went through with Michigan State University. But I think the pieces that I bring to the table that many of the other council members or the candidates do not, is that I have a diverse background. And let me explain a little bit about that. I'm getting dry. My mother was an immigrant to this country, and as such, I am a first-generation American. So I bring that background, understanding what it is to be someone coming from another country. In Troy, we have many different ethnicities here, and they bring something to the table, and that diversity is a very strong piece of our fabric. And I think that that is something that we need to encourage. And what I have done in those communities is I have been on the advisory board of an organization called Kappa, that's the Council of Asian Pacific Americans. I have been a very active participant with AIPAC, which is the Asian Pacific American Chamber of Commerce. I've been an active member with the Chaldean Chamber of Commerce. And I think those different ethnicities and those different backgrounds would make me, give me the ethnic knowledge, the background that would help me to be a strong candidate for the council. In addition to that, I've served on, oops.
That's okay, go ahead and finish.
In addition to that, I've served on the Advisory Council for the Southfield Schools, Economic Development Group in Southfield, Automation Alley Advisory Board, United Way of LCC here in Oakland County. I currently serve on DEFCAN Board, and that's Def Community Advocacy Network. I've already mentioned Kappa, the Council of Asian Pacific Americans, and I also serve on an Advisory Council of Walsh College. So I think all of those things really make me a strong candidate. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor member Teetz?
You've touched on this before, but maybe you can give a wrap-up or summary. Why do you want to serve on the Troy City Council?
Certainly. I do believe that my skills, my abilities, my education, my knowledge of the community, my knowledge of the ethnicities that we have in our community, all make me a strong candidate. And I believe I have something to give to the city. And I'm happy to do that, if so called upon.
Great. Thanks for your time.
Sure, thank you.
Good luck. Good evening.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to come today.
Thank you. Just a couple of housekeeping issues. I'd like you to take a couple of minutes and just introduce yourself to us and tell us a little bit about yourself. And then each council member is going to ask you an individual question, and if you could just limit your response to somewhere around two minutes, that would be great. We have the clock up here that will count down from two minutes, just to give you an idea of the two minutes, but we're not going to hold you exactly to that if you run over. So if you could begin, just introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about yourself.
Would you like my address and everything too?
No.
Okay. My name is Cassie Kupzounis. I've lived in the city for 19 years. I've been married to the same person for 41 years. I have three very intelligent children. I have four and a half gorgeous grandchildren, three that are living in the Troy area. I have served on the Avondale School Board for nine and a half years. I worked with Troy Medigo, Troy People Concerned, Troy Days, the New Troy Family Days, and I'm here to serve.
Great. I'm going to ask the first question. References are important to the interview process. Especially when there isn't time for us to do a thorough interview. Please tell us who you chose as your references for your questionnaire. Why did you select them, and what would they say about you?
Well, hopefully, I put people down that would have a positive view of me. I chose Jim Sierleski. He has been part of our city for many years. I came in contact with him through Troy Days, when I worked there for the 13 years. He also got me involved in Leadership Troy. And I chose him because after meeting him and working with him for so many years, we've become very good friends, and he's a very nice, honorable person. I told Dr., chose Dr. Sheila McKenzie, who also lives in Troy. We met with Troy Medigo. Henry Allerman got us involved on that board, and she served under me when I was president for two and a half years. And then she succeeded me, and she and many of us on the board helped me turn the Troy Medigo into Troy Medigo Plus when the city asked us to go ahead and take over some more responsibility. And Dr. George Height, I chose because I worked with him for, even though I was on the board for nine and a half years, he was superintendent that we chose, and he does a marvelous job in the Avondale School District. And I chose him so you could see my work ethics as a board member. And like I said, I hope they all say something positive.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Fleming?
Yeah, Cassie, thank you. If appointed, what is the primary thing you would like to see accomplished by this council in the next year? And how would you contribute?
Well, I hope my experience being on a board for nine and a half years and knowing how to, and understand Robert's Rules and the Open Meetings Act, and when you go into closed session, would help the board in the way that I wouldn't need as much time to catch up to the rest of you. I also would like to see our city continue to move forward in a positive way, and I'm very proud of my city, and I'm very proud that I am able to serve in some capacity.
Thank you. Counselor member Campbell?
The Troy City Charter states that the city council is to be a nonpartisan group. Based on that, I'd like to ask you the following: Are you now or have you ever been a member or supporter of, or financial or otherwise, of Troy Citizens United, better known as TCU, Concerned Troy Citizens, Trust? And can you affirm, if we were to give you this position, that you can make decisions based on the well-being of the Troy citizens on a nonpartisan basis?
Yes, I can confirm that, and no, I have not been a member of any of those organizations. I am listed as an independent, and have been for many, many, many years, probably since I started voting. I don't vote for a political party, I vote for a person that sits in a seat that represents me. That's why I've always shined away from joining political parties or getting politically active. I vote for the individual and their qualifications.
Thank you. Counselor member Henderson?
In light of our current taxable value situation, revenues in Troy are forecast to decline for the next couple of years. What do you view as the best possible course of action or actions for the city council?
Well, I think you've taken a very positive step by having your transit center come in, which will help bring in more businesses, which help bring in some more citizens into our area. I think anytime you have a good consortium with businesses, that's a positive, because it brings in new employees. So the direction that you're taking, I think, is a very positive direction, and I think it's going to help our city for many years to come.
Thank you. Counselor member McGinnis?
I know you've talked about a few, but can you highlight some of the leadership roles that you've held, and let us know what important leadership characteristics you feel like you've learned from these roles, and how you plan to use them for the benefit of the city and everyone who lives, works, and visits here?
While I was on the school board, I served as Treasury and Secretary. I chose not to be president or vice president, because at the time, my workload with my business was pretty high. When I was with Troy Medigo, I served as secretary, vice president, and then I eventually took over the presidency from Judge Dreary, and that's when the city asked us to step forward and take on more responsibility, and that's where the name change came from Troy Medigo Plus. When I was with Troy People Concerned, I was just a board member. I was doing the grunt work, but didn't take a leadership role. In Troy Days, I served on the board at the appointment of council, and I chaired the original shuttle service and some of the other activities. Right now, with Troy Family Days, I now serve as co-chair to special needs, co-chair with the opening ceremonies, and chair for the headquarters. And I think one of the things that I've learned from all of my involvement in volunteering is how to work with individuals and other people so that we can come up with best solutions for our citizens.
Thank you. Counselor member Teetz?
You've touched on this before, but if you can just summarize and wrap up, why do you want to serve on the Troy City Council?
When the requests came in from the mayor and the city for somebody, the citizen to step forward to help out for the next 10 months, it was a short-term time, and I realized that I did have the experience on a school board, and believe me, it's quite of an experience when you're on a school board. You make a lot of friends, but you also get to hear a lot of complaints, so I'm accustomed to that. Being a small business owner of two businesses that I started from the ground up, I realized that I had some expertise with what it feels like to be a board, to be a business owner and go through the system, and one was in Troy, of course, and one was in Rochester Hills. And when you're a volunteer, you get to spend a lot of time with other people in the city, and you get to have, listen to them and have input. So I was blessed to be a distinguished citizen in 2008, and I'm just offering my services to the city for the next few months to help move us along into the future.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and thank you for allowing me to be here.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hello.
Just a couple of housekeeping issues. I'm going to give you an opportunity to introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about yourself, and if you could take a couple of minutes to do that. And then each council member is going to ask you an independent question, and if you could limit your response to approximately two minutes, that would be great. There's a clock up here that will go from two minutes down, but we're not going to hold you exactly to that if you go over, so.
Okay.
If you could just take a couple of minutes and introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about yourself.
Well, my name's Ed Pennington. I own a small business in Troy, Pennington Collision. We've been at 15 Rochester since 1968. My dad started the business, and I started managing in 1980. He became ill and passed away in 1990, so I've been the sole owner since 1990. I have, my family lives in Troy. We moved to Troy eight years ago. We, our kids went through Troy Athens High School, and they both graduated, and the schools are phenomenal. We have good rapport with the city and with the Troy police. We have many friends on the police department that used to come in, come into the shop and work on their cars, and Dad bought a couple of cars from Ron Schneider and Al Shank, the guys from the old days. But we've always had a good rapport with the city, and we just enjoy this opportunity to give back to the city.
Thank you. I'm going to ask the first question. So references are an important part of the interview process, especially when there isn't time for a thorough interview. Please tell us who you chose as your references for your questionnaire, why you selected them, and what would they say about you?
Well, first of all, I chose the pastor of our church and his wife. We've been going to Community Christian Church in Australian Heights for seven years, and I chose him and his wife because we've known them and we've come close with them, and I think that they would be great character references for me and my wife and our family. They know us very well. I chose a small business owner, Bob Cerna. He's been in business in Troy for quite a while, and he's a respected businessman, and I thought that he would be a great reference. And then I also put Ed Murphy on there. Ed Murphy was lieutenant, I'm pretty sure he's a lieutenant or a captain in the Troy police, and him and I became friends after, you know, we fixed his cars many times. I just thought that represented kind of a wide range of different people that, you know, the different areas that we knew different people.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Fleming?
Hello, Ed.
Hello.
If appointed, what is the primary thing you would like to see accomplished by this council in the next year, and how would you contribute?
Well, it would kind of depend on the agenda for the council. What I would like to see is just a council that would work together without division. I think I provide a stable voice that would, you know, not be divisive. I've always considered myself an independent thinker and, you know, not easily swayed by anyone's opinion, but I just think that the council needs to move forward. I don't know what the exact agenda is for the city, but just to move forward in a, you know, a non-acrimonious way.
Counselor member Campbell?
Hi, Ed, how are you?
Good, how you doing?
Good. I think you've already answered this, but it's such a nice question, I got to ask it anyways. Troy City Charter states that the city council is to be a nonpartisan organization. So based on that, I ask you, are you now or have you ever been a member or supporter, financial or otherwise, of Troy Citizens United, TCU, Concerned Troy Citizens or Trust? And if we were to give you this seat, can you make decisions based on the well-being of the Troy citizens on a nonpartisan basis?
Yeah, you're right. I did kind of answer a little bit, but, right, I'm independent. I vote a Republican, I voted Democratic. I would never pull just a straight ticket, that's not the kind of person I am. I look at the person, I don't look at the party. And actually, the two organizations that you mentioned, I've heard of them, but no, other than reading them in the paper, I really have nothing to comment on either one.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Counselor member Henderson?
In light of our current taxable value situation, revenues in Troy are forecast to decline for the next couple of years. What do you view as the best possible course of action or actions for the council to pursue?
Well, the council, I don't know 100% of the budget, what you guys come up with two weeks ago, but it looked, it looked like, you know, the city was moving in the right direction budget-wise. You know, if tax revenues are falling, I mean, we, you guys did a great job, you know, last time around with the cuts, or whatever you had to do to, you know, to meet your budget.
Counselor member McGinnis?
Good evening.
Hello.
I am interested in hearing you highlight some of the leadership roles that you've held. I'd like to know what important leadership characteristics you've... financial or otherwise, of Troy Citizens United, TCU, Concerned Troy Citizens, or Trust? And if we were to give you this seat, can you make decisions based on the well-being of the Troy citizens on a nonpartisan basis?
Yeah, you're right. I did kind of answer a little bit, but, right, I'm independent. I voted Republican. I voted Democratic. I would never pull just a straight ticket. That's not the kind of person I am. I look at the person. I don't look at the party. And actually, the two organizations that you mentioned, I've heard of them, but no, other than reading them in the paper, I really have nothing to comment on either one.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Henderson.
In light of our current taxable value situation, revenues in Troy are forecast to decline for the next couple of years. What do you view as the best possible course of action or actions for the council to pursue?
Well, the council, I don't know 100% of the budget, what you guys come up with two weeks ago, but it looked like, you know, the city was moving in the right direction budget-wise. You know, if tax revenues are falling, I mean, you guys did a great job, you know, last time around with the cuts or whatever you had to do to, you know, to meet your budget.
Councilmember McGinnis.
Good evening.
Hello.
I am interested in hearing you highlight some of the leadership roles that you've held. I'd like to know what important leadership characteristics you've learned from these roles and how you plan on using them for the benefit of this city and everyone that lives, works, and visits here.
Well, obviously, anyone sitting up here has a big leadership role for the voice of the city, so I would, you know, anyone that would come to me with an issue, I would want to, you know, hear that out and make a decision on, you know, whatever they have. We, a quarter of a few years ago, I coached football. I coached football for Troy Cowboys, which is a city league, and I coached for 12 years. That was, you know, you're kind of a liaison between the head coach and the parents, and you're working these kids towards a common goal and teaching them to work as a team and teaching them, you know, the game of football. We did that for, I did that for 12 years. I worked with Troy Athens Athletic Boosters for six years. I was not the Vice President, like I said in the paper, but worked with the boosters to raise funds for the athletic programs. And we supported just various organizations, Troy Baseball, you know, different things like that in the city.
Councilmember Teetz.
You've touched on many of these things already. If you can kind of wrap up, why do you want to serve on the Troy City Council?
Well, I've been asked that question many times since I threw my hat in the ring a couple of weeks ago. The city's been great to me and my family. Like I said, my dad started in '68. The Troy Police, Troy Fire, we've had great relationships with everyone in the city. I just feel this is my chance to give back. I would have to learn, you know, quite a bit, and I'm a fast learner, but I just, you know, look forward to the opportunity of a challenge. I've had many challenges in my life. Buddy of mine and I used to do the MS-150. We did it for 10 years in a row. Where you hop on a bicycle and you ride 150 miles. I mean, you know, different physical challenges I've done, and it's just that type of challenge, obviously a little different, but look forward to the opportunity.
Thank you. Good luck.
Yep, thanks.
Thank you.
That concludes the interview process. We're going to take a recess and come back at 9:40.
9:40. Good. Perfect.
We are back in session. So the process is going to be, City Manager Kishnik, are you going to call the names, and we will raise our hands, and then we'll count. Councilmember Teetz.
I think before the voting, though, we should square up. Is it one vote? If someone gets four votes on the first time, is it set at that point? Or do we want to have just a second round? I think we should do that before we cast votes. That way, everybody, it's all set and clear and so forth.
And vote again. Yeah, let's get a consensus before we begin. If, in the first round, there are four or more votes, is that going to be okay to move a resolution? Or do we want to have another vote after that? Councilmember McGinnis.
You have something for my opinion?
No, I thought you, I'm sorry, I thought you were just scratching.
I mean, I am, I guess I want to see how it goes, but I understand wanting to lay out the process ahead of time. So, you know, I would prefer, my original inclination when I was thinking about this earlier today was I would prefer for us to continue to vote until we've got, you know, a very clear definitive person getting the majority. But then, on the other hand, we would hopefully have a chance to do that when someone moves a resolution. So I don't know how it will work if we kind of have discussion in our initial votes. I'm sorry, I have a horrible problem not speaking into the microphone, so I apologize. My initial inclination was thinking I'd like to kind of continue to vote until we have more of a clear majority, depending on how things go. But then on the flip side, you know, someone will be moving a resolution, and we'll all have a chance to vote at that point. So if we hadn't all originally had that person as one of our votes for purposes of discussion, we would have a chance to, you know, support that person on a resolution. So I am really open to, I guess, the desire of the rest of the council. I could see the benefit to doing it either way.
Councilmember Campbell.
I think four votes pretty much sets the pattern. After that, we make the resolution, and people vote. I mean, to keep voting until we get to what one person or two people may want doesn't make any sense. I think we get to four, that's the consensus, and yet it's the majority of this council. I think we move forward.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yeah, I guess the only question would be is we have a couple with four. You know, that could happen or no?
I don't think that's possible.
And then we just go to round two?
Yeah, then we go to round two. If there's a tie, we'll go to round two. Are we comfortable that four or more, if somebody offers a resolution, we will move forward from there? If a resolution isn't moved, we can discuss it further.
It's hard to predict what's going to happen. Obviously, you don't know. There could be two people with four. Then you have to move on. You have to continue to, I don't know if that, I don't think that can happen.
Obviously, we will move on if there are four each, but I would be surprised if that happens, but.
You have an opinion?
Councilman Teetz.
I don't think it hurts to do a second round. And at that point, we'll have an opportunity to have a unanimous vote for somebody if they're at four, and you can do that. But I am fine either way.
I think it's a valid point to, what would it hurt to do two? That wouldn't hurt anything, so let's do two. And we'll go there, and once we do two, hopefully that'll be it. So we're going to vote for two people per council member.
And narrow it down to two and then go from there?
Well, unless somebody gets six off the first vote, then we're done, right?
So Richard Bobian, Bert Kopple, Carmen
Carmen Johnson. Cassie Kalasunis. Edward Pennington. Mr. Pennington received six votes, Mr. Koppel, three, and Mr. Bobian, three.
I don't see any reason for a second vote if somebody wants to move a resolution.
Mayor Protem Fleming. We resolve that Troy City Council hereby appoints Edward Pennington for the vacant city council member position with the term expiring November 11th, 2013.
I support.
Moved by Mayor Protem Fleming and supported by Councilmember Henderson that we appoint Edward Pennington for the vacant city council member position with the term expiring November 11th, 2013. Discussion.
I would like to, to just say thank you to all of the candidates that put their name in. I know it, it was a very difficult decision for me, and I know it was for, for everybody else when you have a small process like this. And on behalf of the council, thank you very much for putting your name in the hat. And everybody that came forward tonight did an excellent job, and we thank you very much for offering your service. The vote, Ms. Bittner.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations, Ed. If, if council, with council's permission, we could do the swearing in right now.
I actually think that's a good idea, especially since we have the closed session.
I mean, right here, right now?
Yeah.
Is that okay with everybody?
Sure, absolutely. Let's get them up here.
Come on up. We'll, we'll do a formal, so you can invite friends and family to the next council meeting. But I think it'd be a great idea to swear you in tonight, and if you want to sit and watch, that'd be great, and be prepared to thicken your skin. And we'll do a formal, formal presentation, if you want to bring your family at the next meeting. Ms. Bittner will come over and.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Charter of the City of Troy, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of city council member in and for the City of Troy, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, according to the best of my abilities, and help me God.
I do. I don't have to say anything, do I?
You don't have to say anything.
Good.
Will he come to the closed session? Question for the City Attorney Bloom. Could he come to the closed session this evening?
I, yes, that's your, your call. I mean, he is sworn in, so he is a member, so.
It might be a great experience for you to sit in that closed session tonight if you want to stick around. You are sworn to secrecy, though. You can't discuss anything that goes on in that meeting, so it's a test. Okay. Moves us to I five, installment purchase of golf carts. Somebody want to move the resolution?
Here.
Councilmember McGinnis?
I move the resolution as printed.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember McGinnis and supported by Councilmember Campbell that we approve the installment of purchase golf carts as printed. Discussion?
Here.
Mayor Protem Fleming.
Just a clarification, when you do the math here very quickly, you got a 55-month lease, seventeen thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars a month, that's about nine hundred thousand dollars. And I think I understand that the 149 trade-ins offset that, so that the total out-of-pocket's 538,260, but just want to make sure that's clear. If you look at this resolution, it's, just want to make sure that I'm understanding that correctly. The net out-of-pocket on that lease is 538,260?
Mr. Darling has the numbers, right?
Yes, I do, sir. Council, Mr. Mayor, like, yeah, the loan amount will be around 497,140 dollars. The imputed interest through the life of the loan will be about 41,000. So, an imputed interest rate would be about 3.1 percent, which is clearly in the market for financing.
So, the question, the answer is yes?
Yes. Yes, is the answer.
The answer is yes? Okay. The vote, Ms. Bittner.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. That takes us to the consent agenda. Are there any items that council member wants to pull? Hearing none, somebody want to move the resolution to approve all items?
Mayor.
Councilmember McGinnis.
Resolve that Troy City Council hereby approves all items on the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember McGinnis and seconded by Councilmember Campbell that we approve all items on the consent agenda. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda are the key items. There are no announced public hearings, none submitted. No memorandums have been submitted. So, that takes us to public comment for items not on the agenda. I will call your name if you will please come to the podium. And once again, please pay attention to the rules that are printed in the agenda. And we need to move the clock back to three minutes if we could. And at the one-minute mark, the light will shine that you have one minute left. Please be prepared to wrap up your comments when that light comes on. Jen Anese will be our first speaker.
Good evening.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Okay, well, you all know me. I'm Jen Anese. I'm editor of Troy Patch. It's good to see you all. I know all you pretty well. I've talked to all of you. I've had wonderful conversations, actually, with all of you. And I've been covering Troy.
I'm here.
Okay, sorry, I've been covering Troy since December 2nd of last year. My first story was actually a story about Janice Daniels and a Facebook status that she wrote. So, that was my first story coming into Troy, and so I've covered a lot in the past year. So, I can honestly say that I don't like being on this side of the camera, but I need to take a moment to just say thank you to all of you for, I guess, welcoming, welcoming me into Troy and for always being open with me and putting up with me when I call you, you know, 20, 30 times for comments, which I, I do call you all quite a bit. I want to say thank you to city administrators for always being open and always being forthcoming with information. I want to say thank you to Troy Patch's readers for being the best readers ever. We've got a live chat going right now, and we seriously have the best readers ever. And I just want to say thank you. Sorry, I'm very nervous. I don't like being on this side of the camera.
You're doing fine.
Oh, thank you. So, I am sad to say I'm leaving Patch, and it's been a wonderful year, and I just wanted to say thank you to all of you. I'm still gonna be in Troy, though. I'm gonna be, like, literally down the street at BNP Media, and I wish you all the best, and thank you again. Good luck.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Resident Nicholas Chiracero.
Good evening.
Good evening. I gotta do what I asked you to do last week.
Yeah. How am I doing?
Two weeks ago, I asked who was running for the city, who was running the City of Troy. The results are still out. It seems that three members of this council have abdicated their authority for the city attorney and their puppeteer. Once again, the results of the recall group has led to the Troy, City of Troy getting a black eye. This time, the court has given us one. In full public view, we were told that everyone but the city attorney knew the state of Michigan was correct in its opinion of the election laws. Judge Denise Langford Moore stated that the Secretary of State and Attorney General were correct in the interpretation of these laws. Don't let anyone spin this into something it's not. It's not a compromise. This was a complete defeat for the city. The only reason Judge Langford Moore's did not require the election in February is because the holidays, and there's not enough time to prepare for one. Once again, the city looks stupid and incompetent. This is not the first time. Does anyone recall the Hooters incident? There's still one more significant suit still out. This is the suit by Grand Sacra to determine who has title to the land on which we're building the current transit center. If we lose that one, we're in deep trouble. I would also like to know who paid for the three additional lawyers that represented the city this past week. If she had done her homework like she should have, this might have been avoided. Neither she nor the city clerk contacted, contacted either the county clerk or the Secretary of State to require, to find out the requirements of a recall and an election. I don't know about the council, but I have lost complete confidence in this attorney. If she feels for this city, she would resign now before she continues to place this city in jeopardy and continues to make us the laughingstock of the nation. The recall group has been something. First, they make us notorious by putting a comment by Janice Daniels into the national news. Then they force us into an unnecessary election, which will cost us probably closer to $100,000 than to $50,000. This has occurred because their candidate lost in the November 2011 election. Thank you.
Next speaker is Resident Linda Kaima.
Good evening.
Good evening again. First of all, Attorney Bloom, thank you for defending our charter. And it's really interesting. I hear, every time I'm here, so much fiction. I think some people should try to get published. Now that we have a date set for the mayoral election, let's hope we have candidates that are leaders. We need someone who can help our city heal from the past negative focus that we have unfortunately had, which was brought to us by our former mayor, Janice Daniels. I hope those who genuinely care for our city and not just political gain will decide to run. We don't need any further division. We do need candidates who, we do not need candidates who would sue the city to get attention and get ahead. We need fiscally responsible individuals with a vision of the big picture of Troy's future. Someone who can work with all disciplines, citizens, business, and staff. We do not need the constant badgering and accusations. We need someone with knowledge, integrity, and professionalism, and one that doesn't play games. When we have the slate of candidates, voters like buyers must beware. Do your homework. Listen and double-check all the information before you decide who to vote for. Thank you.
Next speaker is Resident Pam Brady. Good evening.
I have nice things to say.
Please, please speak into the microphone.
Good evening, Mayor, city staff, council, residents. I am Pam Brady, Natural Resources Chair of the Legal Women Voters of Troy area. I stood here a short month ago and accepted a proclamation for America Recycles Day in Troy on behalf of all of the people and businesses in Troy who recycle. At that time, I said that we saved natural resources, helped clean the air, land, and water, and brought to the city $50 a ton for everything we recycled. I want to take just a quick moment to mention another good thing that recycling has helped bring to the city. Something that hasn't gotten much notice in all the Troy, is that Troy has been awarded Bronze Status at the Michigan Green Communities Conference in Lansing last month. Troy got this Bronze Status for exemplary action in a variety of categories, including participation in the Southeastern Oakland County Resource Recovery Authority's extensive recycling program that I just mentioned above. Also implementing design standards for trees, stormwater management, open space planning, and other sustainable concerns. The challenge is a new tool to help local leaders measure their progress in implementing energy, economic development, and environmental improvements. It is supported by the Michigan Association of Counties, Michigan Department of Environmental Quality, Michigan Economic Development Corporation Energy Office, Michigan Municipal League, and Michigan Townships Association. It uses a rating system to recognize sustainability accomplishments and serves as a guide for community leaders looking to learn from their peers. Since city council proclaimed America Recycles Day in Troy just this short month ago, I felt we should be knowledgeable about this award as well. I'd like to thank city council and city staff for entitling and encouraging and promoting recycling, as well as advocating for sustainability of natural resources in Troy. It's a course of action we can all live with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, it's backside of the paper.
Always. Next speaker is Resident Richard Peters.
Good evening. Evening, Mayor, council, folks in Troy, people in the audience. As far as Mrs. Bloom goes, I think she got an award or, or, I think she had an award on the top, in a state. Also, if she's doing such a bad job, why are we rated the top city in the state? I mean, it's, these guys. As far as the Attorney General up there about this case, Mr. Shutey, if I recall, stuck his nose in a commercial. Here, he's taking an opinion, and this man has the gall to tell people that they don't know what they're doing. He should be recommended, and for that fact, in my mind, maybe even impeached for showing partiality on a job that he's supposed to be impartial on. Okay, we all agree for the families. Also, I'd like to see maybe some kind of marker for folks to maybe to dispose of their medals and their, their, you know, where you can send a tag to them or something, or instead of going to the Sacra plant, maybe they could do that, and maybe get some kind of revenue for that. Also, I'd like to just quickly see on the budget, I'd hope on the federal budget, that the folks get together. I don't think we need a shock to drive us back into recession, and I hope we don't go the other way too far, where we'll be have superinflation on the other end. And finally, I would hope maybe the EPA would take a check at the Superfund for the old Packer Building in Detroit down there. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Resident James Savage.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening, City Council. So, the City of Troy is stuck with another election, and the taxpayers of Troy will have to pay for it. In the past, I believe, the special elections cost closer to 90,000, not the 50,000 that's been reported. So, the recall supporters lied when they claimed there was no cost to the city. It was Mr. Benkowski and the recall supporters who brought this election on, not Janice Daniels. It was the recall supporters and the Troy Chamber of Commerce leadership that brought recall supporters and the Troy Chamber of Commerce leadership that brought outsiders in and gave us a negative media attention, was not Janice Daniels. So let's be very clear. This colossal political mess that our city has been in since the November 6th election of this year is the result of the recall initiated by Mr. Binkowski and his supporters. They are to blame, not the city attorney and not Janice Daniels. The city attorney is paid by the city to represent the city according to the directions given by the council. And in this council's case, the council gave the wrong directions. November 2011, Janice Daniels was elected by Troy voters to be our next mayor. From day one, she was bullied, slandered, victimized, verbally abused by a group of people who would not accept the election results. Some of her opponents were her colleagues on the council. Yet, in spite of all that turmoil, in the year of Mayor Daniels, Troy progressed better than we had done for many years. The financial report at the last meeting was the best we had heard for many years, with a bright outlook instead of the doom and gloom of the past. Janice Daniels promised to bring financial responsibility to Troy. If she had been given a chance with the help of the new city management, indications are she would have done just that. And it appears that some of the individuals who personally attacked Mayor Daniels are now using the personal attack tactics on certain council members. Thank you.
That concludes the list that has signed up to speak. Our next order of business is council referrals. There are no council referrals. Council comments. Councilmember McGinnis.
I had a request, and I actually, I had mentioned this to Cindy Stewart. I didn't give her the benefit of a day or several days to put something together, but I know all of the council members had an opportunity to check out the new city website when we were appusing our agenda packet. And I was wondering if Cindy might be able to just come forward and speak for a minute or two to highlight all of the changes that you'll see on the city website. We won't be meeting again for a couple of weeks, and I would hate to miss this opportunity to have an informal unveiling of the city website. So if you don't mind being put on the spot, I would appreciate it.
Why don't you take a couple of seconds and I'll make a, I'll make a quick comment and then we can go. In light of what happened Friday in Connecticut, you know, I looked to see if I could find something that maybe we can find good out of. So I am going to ask city manager Kishnik, we've been talking for three years that I've been on council, to have a meeting with the school board. So I'm gonna, if I can get consensus at the table here after the holidays and first of the year, this council needs to meet with the school board. And needs to meet with the school board regularly. So that needs to be on our agenda ASAP first of the year. And if I can get consensus at the table, then we can ask Mr. Kishnik to move forward with that. If he could make that arrangement by contacting Dr. Fowler and putting that together, I would certainly appreciate that. Mayor Protem Fleming?
Mayor, I support that. But what I would suggest, before we schedule any meeting, let's have a definite agenda, exactly what we want to cover at those meetings, not just general conversation, because we're all busy people and school boards are busy, too. So I would just recommend that we set an agenda, not just our agenda, but an agenda in conjunction with the school board of things they would like to cover as well, so we make the best use of our time.
Agreed.
And I agree, we need, it'd be good to have a meeting.
Agreed. I have my own opinion right now as to what we need to speak about. Maybe we could all put our thoughts together and get those to city manager Kishnik and get this meeting going as soon as we can. Ms. Stewart, are you ready?
Thank you. It is spur of the moment. But thanks for taking a look at our new website. It'd been a long time. I know early on, the website was about up and running when I got here 15 years ago, and we have not done much with it. You know, changed some things around, but we did a whole, you know, a whole redo of it. And this was part of when you approved the communication strategy. That's what we used some of the money for. So we have a new design. We kind of concentrated on live here, work here, play here. And we wanted to draw attention for our residents who live here, work here, play here, and our visitors who might want to come work here and play here, and our business community. I know all your council candidates all talked about that, and we talk about it every day, that our business community is very, very vital. So the work here, that's what we are targeting. When you look at the work here, we've got grow your business, a toolbox, and locate your business. We want to make it so that if a new company is coming, if a company wants to relocate, we've got all the tools for them, that everything they need, whatever departments they need. Live here for our residents, we want to make, you know, what the residents need the most, whether it's your assessment, your tax bill, your water bill, your forms. We go through a lot of forms and permits with the residents, but anything, city services, we kind of placed all that under live here. Play here, you're going to see your library, our community center, our museum, nature center, anything that's more of the play, could be with the senior citizens, the young people. And then we also have, we have a government section, so that's where you'll find the city council, all of our meetings, anything related to the code and charter, our budget, boards and committees. And then we still have resources, anything people might be looking at, whether it's, you know, your local newspapers, different kind of, you know, could be your places of worship. Then we have contact us. We always want people to be able to contact us. So now you're going to click on that. We've got a little form right in there that you can give your name, your address, what you want, and right away, you know, you'll get a response back. And then our city calendar, anything that's going on in the community, we put all of our events, plus we help the nonprofits. Anything nonprofit, that's what we put on our city calendar, and we've always done that. So we're asking, and the new thing with it, it works very well on your mobile phones. We know that's the way people want to get their information. That's where they want to look. And the neat thing, too, if you're on our community directory, you're looking up a department on your mobile phone, it's not just a link to get to it, it's a link that you can click on and it will dial. So you can automatically dial the clerk's office, dial the manager's office, dial, you know, our economic development specialist, just to make it easy to find, you know, on your phone. And we know when talking to people and designers, people want three clicks. They want to find what they want. And we had a lot of pages. So we consolidated, we tried to make things easier for people to find. We don't want, we're going to lose people after three clicks. You're going to go somewhere else. So we don't want businesses who want to look, how do I, you know, what permits do I need, you know, the planning department, economic development department, but we want to get you right away. So we invite all of you, we invite the public, please send us your feedback. We know it's not 100% right now. We've been taking care of glitches all day. We just went live at 3:04 on Friday. So we want everybody's opinion. I mean, I hope you like it. We do want to make it a lot easier for you. So thank you. If you have questions?
Looks good. Mayor? Councilmember Campbell.
The question was right up about the cost of these other attorneys. Can we get that answer and get that static out of the air so we can move on to other things?
City Attorney Bloom?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I am happy to report that there were no outside money spent on attorneys. They all donated their services to the city and to representing the individual commission members, election commission members.
Thank you. Anybody else? I do have two other issues. I don't want to put Chief Mayor on the spot, but we did receive an email this afternoon before we came here regarding the police department's response with the school on Friday. And I think maybe the citizens would like to know how valuable our police department is, how quickly they respond proactively to events, even if they don't happen in our state. And I was very happy to read the email from city manager Kishnik this afternoon about the proactive relationship that the police department has with the schools. And maybe if you could just briefly tell the citizens what you did and what your team did.
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor and council.
And I know you weren't expecting to do that tonight, but I thought it was important.
Thank you. It's definitely a tragic event. We all knew that the citizens' parents of Troy would be concerned about it. It's school safety, it's a safety issue. Whenever something like this happens, that's so tragic, we try to, try to put ourselves in the role of the parents and do what we can to reassure people. We have an ongoing great relationship with all the school districts that are located in the city of Troy. There are more than just the Troy schools. We always reach out and we always try to keep in contact with them. You can't have a tragedy happen and then suddenly reach out. You have to have an established relationship so you can get things done. I called Dr. Fowler. We were able to talk, and she described some of the issues and concerns that they had. And I reassured her that we would do extra patrol at the schools as much as possible during the arrival time for the children and at the dispersal time. We'll do that throughout this week, and then we'll see where we are next week. One of the issues, when you talk about safety concerns and security plans, we obviously don't want to give away too much detail. So we want to reassure people, but we don't want to give away all the details of what we do, because then we could be telling the wrong people. So suffice it to say, we will get with the schools. We have a meeting set up for tomorrow afternoon. We'll get with the schools again. We'll talk to the Troy schools, and we'll reach out to the other school districts, which each have one school within our system. We also have private schools. We've got long-term plans that the police department's been doing for years, where we have security plans for all of the schools within the city. We know their entry points, what all the security levels they have, how they secure the building, and some other features that could come into play if something terrible was to happen at a school. Again, those are plans that we have. They're internal documents. I just want to assure everybody, we do have plans. Today, we had officers go to the schools as possible, spend time there, be there to reassure people. I got reports back from officers, and I had personal experience with a mother walking up to thank us for being there. And she actually broke down crying and had to walk away, because it's just the nature of what happened. It's a tragic event. The police department will do what we can in outreach on these things and make sure that we're doing our job. There's a lot of other factors, but it's a security issue. I just want to assure people that we're on top of it. Does that answer kind of the overview of the question?
That's it. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I did have one other issue regarding the water bill. Unless I misread the email, do we have an ordinance that prohibits us from doing anything other than charging somebody the cost of the water? Is that, is that why we have restrictions? I read the email, and I thought it might have contradicted itself, where it said we had an ordinance, but it was an administrative policy. So if, if nobody is prepared to answer that tonight, I'd just, if somebody could just get back to me or the council at some other point and, and give me a definitive on that, maybe we could. It just seems to me that under these circumstances that we might be able to try and do something. But I understand why you don't want to set a precedent either. Mayor Protem Fleming, did you want to?
Yeah, I concur. And I've already had a conversation with the city manager on this, and he put out an email this afternoon. I think you're preparing something for the council to consider, not something we can decide tonight, I don't think.
No.
But I think you have, you have a plan. I like what you're thinking, but you may want to put that in writing in more detail.
Let me, let me just say, what I have is an idea of my former experiences, and then I have what has been put into process by the DPW and the finance department in the city of Troy for many, many years. And then I have the situation that has come up and comes up probably more regularly than you might imagine. So my idea was to get together with some people internally and talk about this and see if there was any way to put together a policy that you could look at. I may have misspoke or wrote when I said it's an administrative situation, but could have policy implications. Maybe that was a confusing statement on my part in an email, and I didn't mean for that. What I meant was to say, when I conferred with the finance director and the city attorney, they advised there was no recourse to forgive any amount of that payment or adjust based on the ordinance. So that's what we'll be looking at and having a future conversation. We're here to help people, but we're also here to operate a business. It's a, it's a balance.
I understand that. Any other council comments? It takes us to reports. Is there any council member that wants to speak on any of the reports that we got on the agenda tonight? No study items this evening. We will adjourn and go to closed session. Thank you for coming tonight.